Meeting of the Planning Board. First order of business to review and approve minutes. We have minutes from May 6, 2021, and July 1, 2021. Anyone on the board have any questions, comments, or additions or edits they would like to have made to the minutes?
No questions.
I have none.
No comments.
Okay, I have none either. I will entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the minutes from May 6, 2021, and July 1, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item of business is to review and sign bills. We have bills here from WB Mason Offs Supplies for a nameplate for $9.92. Graves Engineering for Falcon Farms Definitive Plan Peer Review for $844.80. Graves Engineering Sun Tech Park Site Plan Peer Review for $530.55. McMahon Transportation for Sun Tech Park Traffic Peer Review for $5,700. Total is $7,085.27. Do I have a motion?
I would move that we approve and pay the bills as read by the chairman totaling $7,085.27.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item of business is the board member comments. Mr. Rao?
None, from my side.
Mr. Jerry?
No comments this month.
Mr. Thomas?
No comments this month, sir.
I don't have any general comments, other than I do want to make an announcement that Mr. Royal Lakis is planning on being absent for this evening's meeting. Our first hearing is a new public meeting for 235 Main Street, a request for a de minimis change. The applicants, please introduce themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, my name is Richard Rickel for the record. I'm an attorney with offices at 11 Maple Avenue, and I'm here representing the Love &amp; Realty LLC for this request for de minimis change. This is really, I would suggest to you respectfully, as I said in my letter to you, which I assume is in your file, that this is a minor change that really is born out of a request, a belated request by the fire department. And we met with the fire department, with the chief and the deputy chief, John and I, and I'm here with John Grenier from JM Grenier Associates. Sorry about that, John.
Thanks.
So we met with the fire department, and this is the result of that discussion. And they asked us to come forward with a request for a de minimis change to do this.
Okay.
That's about it.
Right.
Do you want to explain it?
Yeah, so as a request, again, as Richard said, from the fire department, we are incorporating a turnaround area for emergency vehicles right here on the, as you face it, from Main Street on the right front-hand side of the building. Really, there were no other changes to the site plan. We shifted a couple of the parking spaces, but we still obviously need all required parking. And again, this was just born out of a request from the fire department to give them ability to turn emergency vehicles around within the site and then be able to pull out.
Okay, thank you. Anyone on the board have any comments or questions? Mr. Rao?
I believe it does qualify for a de minimis change, so I don't have any comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jerry?
I would agree with Mr. Rao. I believe it clearly qualifies as a de minimis change.
Mr. Thomas?
Same, I believe it's de minimis.
I am agreeing as well. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? It's a public meeting, I'm sorry. So if there is anyone in the public that wishes to be heard, they're welcome to raise their hand. I'm not expecting too much, okay? Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to accept this as a request for de minimis change.
I would move that we accept this request for de minimis change for 235 Main Street, Love &amp; Realty LLC.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Our next hearing is a continued public hearing for South Street Falcon Farms Nine-Lot Subdivision. It's a definitive subdivision for Mr. Rashid, I'm sorry, Mr. Rashid Sheikh. His location is South Street. Mr. Sheikh.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for the record. My name is Rashid Sheikh, trustee of Falcon Farms and Seven Shadow Realty Trust. And with me, our engineer, Joe Markodan from Joe Markodan Associates. I just wanted to kind of give you a little update from last meeting. If you remember, one of the requests from the last meeting was that can we have really a continuous sidewalk on one side? And, you know, with some understanding and discussions. So we are able to entertain that, and we will share that with you. So the regs required five-feet sidewalk. We have five-feet sidewalk from the beginning all the way to the crossing on this side. And then, as we go on the crossing, it goes four feet. So, you know, again, it's better than we thought originally, but it's four-feet sidewalk. And as Mr. Chair was really looking for, like, a stroller or something to continue on the sidewalk. So we are able to build that sidewalk here. And then, you know, other than that, we have the grass strip. We have about 10-feet grass strip on this side of the road and 11-feet on the southerly side of the road. But to keep it consistent, because the crossing has only four-feet sidewalk and smaller kind of grass strips where the guardrail will go on both sides. And I can get into that in a minute. And then, of course, Joe can get into a lot more detail. But basically, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to be consistent so it look kind of straight. And so it will be like a couple of feet, like one to two feet of sidewalk. In between the curb and the sidewalk, there will be like a couple of feet of grass strip. And there will be about 11-feet of grass strip on the other side, 10-feet on the other side. So basically, it'll be plenty of grass strip for the snow piling and all that, and also for the grading. You still have five feet, you know, 50-feet, sorry, 50-feet in here, but since we have the crossing as 33-feet. So the crossing from face to face, from outer face to outer face is 33-feet. And we are trying to use the current crossing. Why are we using current crossing? Is because this was like a 100-year-old crossing by the farm. And in the last few years, like about four years ago, the previous owner went to the Conservation Commission and asked for to rebuild this sidewalk, I mean, this crossing. So they actually, it was used to be fieldstone. So they actually, with the Conservation Commission order, which was about four, it was in 2015, 2016. So with that order, they actually changed this crossing, and they put three-feet concrete block, which are 18-inch deep and six-feet long. So they are about 4,000, they are all solid concrete, and they're about 4,000 pounds. They're pretty solid. And there are about three layers of that of each. Again, this is just the base layer at this point of that kind of roadway. It was never finished, because they never really built anything. So Conservation Commission really were concerned that, look, we just built this, we just, you know, given the order to build this, so see if you can use that. So there is no disturbance, because we just, you know, provided the order a few years ago. So we are trying to utilize that current crossing. And that can actually reduce some work and make some houses smaller and all that. But we thought for making sure that we don't disturb any more land. So we use the current crossing. And then, we also had a comment in mind that you like to get at least, you know, one consistent sidewalk. So we are able to provide that one consistent sidewalk all the way to here. And then, there will be a grass strip here. And then, there is a huge grass strip, 11-feet grass strip here, and 10-feet grass strip here. And then, over here in the crossing itself, you have a space for the guardrail on both sides. And then, you know, all appropriate, you know, infrastructure. We are still working with the structural engineer to provide the detail to town engineer. But at this point today, what we want to achieve, we want to really solidify, we have already discussed and verbally kind of agreed on the waivers, but we wanted to kind of clarify the waivers. We had all in one farm. Now we put it on four farms, like Bernie asked that. And we'd like to just make sure they were all on the same page for the waivers. So then, when we go to the Conservation Commission next time, we could close that, and then we can come back and close it here. Thank you very much.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments this time? Mr. Rao?
No comments.
Mr. Jerry?
No, sir.
Mr. Thomas?
None at this time. I just have a couple. So I know when we discussed the wanting to have a crosswalk, it was mostly to make sure that it was over the crossing. I see that you have the five-foot wide in front of the houses that leading into the site. Why couldn't we keep the five-foot in the cul-de-sac area? Why did that have to go down to four feet as well?
The only section that is four-foot is station 2+30 to 4+36. Once we get beyond that, we go back to the full five-foot.
We are going full five feet here.
Forgive me, we only just got this packet, literally.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Twenty minutes ago, so I didn't have a really long time. I just happened to see the four-foot going past the crossing, and I just made an assumption. My fault.
No, 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 I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. We should have provided this earlier, but unfortunately, you know, we had some vacations and stuff, so it was kind of late, so we apologize, and it's a fair question.
Is your confidence that you're going to have Conservation closed at your next meeting, which is, what is it, the 17?
We are hoping so, Mr. Chair. I mean, this is not the first subdivision to build with any kind of crossing. This crossing is 100-year-old, and honestly, with using the current crossing, you know, I mean, when we purchase, when we purchase the land, our board really looking to do like a 40B. It's a 17 acres land, plus we purchased some other land from some other owners. And then, you know, if we would have done 40B, we could have gotten like 20-plus units, and even with four units going to, you know, for inclusion, we still have our 40B, we still have 20-plus units, pretty profitable. But instead of doing that, we're keeping consistent with the neighborhood, because this is a single-family neighborhood. And we are actually providing a pretty good environment here. And, you know, we are building a nice road, a nice environment, which people really are striving for in this, in this time and age and shoes, but which is not difficult, not easy to find. And we are lucky that usually, we're moving in, you know, good families. We built two houses on the street and sold it. Interesting factor is there's no school-going kids there at that price range with that quality. And so there's no burden on the schools either. So we believe that we are trying to do our best to use current infrastructure, current crossing, with kind of no disturbance, so we believe this is a no-brainer.
Yeah, okay. And the only reason why I ask about the conservation is, this hearing's been going on for five months at this point, and I just don't want to belabor this. If you feel that you're going to be confident that you're going to get through conservation and maybe the next meeting, then I'd say that's fine. But if you feel that conservation, because we're not going to make a decision prior to conservation anyways.
Yes, sir.
So if conservation is going to be problematic, or you envision it to be potentially problematic after your next meeting, I would suggest that you may want to consider to withdraw without prejudice, so that you can reapply once you've firmed out the things. It's just unfair to not only this board, but also to town staff to constantly have to keep going through this process when we're not making any headway. So that's the only reason why I ask about that.
Mr. Chair, that's a very fair comment. Unfortunately, we had a pretty major meeting in the conservation, which was canceled, if you remember. There was a meeting before last meeting. So in the conservation, we really only went in front of them two times. One time, when we went in as with a new crossing, and we realized that they want us to use old crossing, and it is our fault that we didn't even know that old crossing was built not too long ago. Because we didn't really, you know, witness that, we didn't build it, we inherited it. So we're using, and then we only met last time, and we believe we are, you know, we can close next meeting. Only God knows, that's our feeling.
Well, all I'm saying is, when you get finished with conservation at your next meeting, you'll have a better feeling.
Yes, sir.
As to how that's going. So if you feel that's fine, then, you know, obviously, in our September meeting, you wouldn't have to worry about that, you can just continue forward. But if you feel that it's going to encounter additional issues, all I'm saying is you may want to consider to.
Yes, sir.
Withdraw without prejudice.
We appreciate that. We do like to get, you know, clear picture and same page in terms of the waivers, because there was a little bit of confusion between Mr. Stone and my understanding. And that's the reason we clarified the, and Mr. Cahill can explain. So if we can get a verbal understanding, and even, you know, everybody's on the same page, we believe this will help close next month.
And I believe that Mr. Cahill received those waivers just recently, have not had time to review them. So between now and next meeting, I'm sure that if he has any issues that he discovers, he can communicate that to you, and they can be adjusted prior to our next meeting. Does that sound fair?
That is fair, Mr. Chair, but I think Mr. Stone is going to ask again, do you have the waivers? Because just like you're asking this question, they ask us the same question that you have the waivers, you know. But again, you don't take the vote on waivers until.
Until the decision.
Until the decision. And we believe we were on the same page. However, our waivers were not clear one by one.
Okay.
So they are the same kind of waivers, but we have now put four farms instead of one farm. But I do appreciate if we can get some understanding tonight. So we are, you know, when we go in front of the conservation, we have, when we say that we have waivers in place, we are not, you know, overstating.
Mr. Cahill, I'm not sure if this is, would be setting precedent, or if this is allowable, but if you had the time to review the waivers and just communicated back to Mr. Sheikh prior to his conservation meeting, just to say that the waivers are in order, whether or not this board is going to pass them is a separate issue, but if the waivers are in order, that may satisfy Conservation's question relative to the waiver.
Yeah, I can certainly do that. And I've been in touch with Brad Stone at Conservation as well, and he's aware that the board is amenable to allowing a sidewalk on just one side of the cul-de-sac. So he understands that, and I think that it's been made clear to Conservation that that's the board's position, regardless of the minute details that come out of it and how that gets actually built on this plan. But they are aware, and I can certainly, I am going to review those waivers. I just have not had time to go through with a fine-tooth comb and look at everything there. So, but we will look at them, and I will get in touch with Mr. Truman as well and Brad Stone and let them know.
I think at least we're addressing, we can't, again, we only just received it, so it's impossible for me to ask this board. I'm sure, I'm sure they just received it themselves. So it's impossible for us to give you an answer at this time, because I have not had time to review it. But I think, you know, with Mr. Cahill reviewing that, I think he'll be in a position to at least answer Conservation's questions relative to the waivers fairly confidently.
So may I say this comment, sir, that can we say, because they, you know, if they presume that the waivers are not in place, they're going to say, okay, let's get the waivers in place, and then we will decide, right? So if I may say, that since last meeting, we met last time, the board was unanimous that verbally, that we are good with these waivers. The waivers are same, it's just more clarified this time.
So I can answer myself.
Yeah.
So understanding the waiver for the crosswalk going across the crossing, I have no issue with that. And I believe that's a discussion that we had amongst the board at one of our meetings that we had. So I'm okay with it going to the four-foot. If that's the intent of that waiver, then I feel confident that we would be in favor of that waiver.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't think this is a planning issue. I think the Planning Board's made itself pretty clear that they're in favor of a sidewalk on one side to the specs that are shown here on this plan. We've had several projects go through with outstanding waivers that Conservation has approved or modified or denied in the past. So I don't see that Conservation's going to have an issue with these waivers being outstanding. The biggest concern I understood for Mr. Stone and Conservation was they wanted to know if this board was going to require sidewalks on both sides, because that changed the calculus of whether or not this crossing needed to be taken down and a new one built. Since it's just one side, that should be enough information for Conservation, and Mr. Truman can confirm, to make a decision based on the specs and the parameters for the bridge.
And I think that the way the current plan is, where the sidewalk is not starting at both sides of the crossing, that is indicative of, that's the flow. So it's going to force people to use, let's say, choose not to use a sidewalk on the other portion. But the sidewalk is intended, and not, it would not be confusing if a sidewalk to nowhere to the other side where there would not be a sidewalk. So I think that's clear.
Yes. I just don't want to lie, Mr. Chair, that there is, other concern is the grass strip on the crossing as well. There is very, you know, it's like one and a half foot grass strip, one to one and a half foot for the guardrail, because there's no space. Once we put 22-foot roadway and four-foot sidewalk, that makes it 26-feet.
Right. But so the other part of the waiver is the shorter grass strip next to the sidewalk.
Yes.
I don't feel that anybody on this board has expressed concern over that. Is that an accurate statement?
Correct.
So I don't feel that that's a problem.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Thank you. That clarified. Appreciate it.
Okay.
We'll see you next time.
Okay. Well, first of all, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing none, I want to entertain a motion to continue this hearing to our September 2nd meeting.
I move that we continue the public hearing for South Street Falcon Farms Nine-Lot Subdivision, located on South Street, to the next meeting of the Planning Board on Thursday, September 2nd at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment, Mr. Chair. Since I thought that you, somehow, there is bylaw that the meeting has to be concluded by August, but do we need another farm to sign to continue?
Right next to you. Emily's on top of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next meeting is the meeting of the Warehouse Distribution and Logistics Center. Before I begin, I would welcome Mr. Dino Iliadi. Will be sitting in for the special permit. So we have a combined meeting of Warehouse Distribution and Logistics Camper Master Plan Development Special Permit and Warehouse Distribution and Logistics Campus Master Plan Development Site Plan Approval by Northbridge Partners LLC. It's a continued public hearing from a location of 384 to 386 South Street and 721 Hartford Turnpike. The applicants, please introduce themselves.
My name's Todd Mori, Beals Associates. Devin Howell from our office with me this evening, Rebecca Brown from GPR, our traffic consultant, as well as Brian Orr from Northbridge on the applicant side. Once I get this back up. Got a couple of things that I'd like to share with you on the site side, fairly minor things, as well as an update on where we are with various permits. And then, I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca to hopefully tie up some loose ends on the traffic. Forgive me just a second, I've got all these pop-ups that come up for Zoom and GoToMeeting and Microsoft Teams and I don't even need to shut down. There we go. On the site side, the, you'll notice, there's really no significant changes. We've been meeting with Conservation Commission intimately on, I guess, the two-week opposite ends of when we meet with you folks, and have worked through a few things with them. This is one of the, this is the site, same site that you saw at our last meeting, that I think Larry Beals was here in my place during that time. And we also went to Conservation with these changes and described them to them. And one of the things that we came out of that meeting with was, on the left side of Building A, this upper building here, we'd agreed to put in pervious pavers in where all those parking spaces are. The access drive that leads in between them will still remain traditional pavement, but the parking spaces themselves will be pavers. Same thing with the parking spaces just above the building, in this area here. Those are also going to be pervious pavers, to allow a little bit of infiltration right down through the pavement surface. And then finally, this emergency slip road here, if you recall, in one of the earlier designs, we had a structured grass road up around Building A. We're going to do that same structured grass on that side. So that's really the only differences on the site that we have. We saw the most recent peer review letter from Graves that responded to this specific change. It looks like there's some typos and things to correct on the plans. We can work on getting those addressed, or those, we could just have that as a condition of an approval. Either way, it's fine with us. We also saw the recent peer review comments from McMahon, which Rebecca will go through in much more detail. And I, and I know you're traffic consultants here as well this evening. There were a couple of site items related to that. One had to do with Building C in the square footage. It's 20,800 square feet, not 20,400 square feet. So there was some confusion there. The traffic calculations were done based on 20,800. The drawings show 20,800 total. I think there was a comment or a note, either in one of our narratives or one of Rebecca's narratives, that may have said 20,400, but to confirm, 20,800. There was also a question about how we were going to restrict the traffic on the South Street driveway. He just wanted to see some signage. This is what we're proposing. If there's better language that could be suggested, we're open to it. But we just want it very, very clear, no trucks are going to go in that entrance. Passenger cars only, right in, right out on South Street, just to remind you. And the other item, and I don't, I think, oh, yes, Devin did put it in. They had requested just to see the truck turning in and around the site. This is up on the northern building, or, yeah, the northerly building, Building A. And you can see the WB67, the full-size, those are the very large tractor-trailer trucks with the 53-foot trailers and the large cabs. They can maneuver quite easily through the site here. And then, same thing as they're coming in and out off of Route 20 and maneuvering through the site. So McMahon just wanted to see the, they had seen how they get from the public roadways into the site, they just wanted to see the internal circulation on those. So we do have those available. Permit-wise, we're, you know where we stand with you folks. In just under two weeks, we'll be back with Conservation Commission. I think we are down to some pretty minor issues. The only real substantive issue that we had, which we're in the process of addressing right now, was the construction phasing. If you've spent any time at all looking at the plans, you'll know there's quite a bit of earthwork that has to be done for this. And they just wanted to see how we intended to phase that. So it's been a little bit of a slow process, but we've wanted to make sure that we're working with the general contractor on this. A lot of times, you go in and you prepare phasing plans, give them to the contractor, and the contractor shakes his head and says, well, that's all nice and that's all good, but I'm not doing it that way. So we want to make sure they understand how it's going to get done, we understand how they want to do it, and that we kind of meet in the middle, so everybody's on the same page. I think we're probably.
Couple days? Monday or Tuesday next week?
Monday or Tuesday next week, those will go back into Conservation, and we'll be presenting those to them at the next meeting. And I think that's about it that we have with them. I just, I haven't seen any other issues that come up. So I think with that, I will turn it over to Rebecca.
Before we go to traffic, I'd like to focus just a little bit more energy on the site plan itself, just to ensure that if there are any questions or comments relative to the site plan, that we bring them up this evening, so that if there needs to be adjustments, you can have time before the next meeting. I can say for myself, the first thing, I was a little disappointed that the entrance on Route 20 didn't really delineate or make certain that people leaving the site would not take a left-hand turn, or even prevent people from taking a left turn. And it was a very open bell shape at the bottom that goes right onto Route 20. And I'm not sure if that's an agreement that you had with Mass DOT, or are you still in conversation with Mass DOT? We, I know that I brought up at our last meeting that we wanted to do whatever we could to fully encourage the flow to eliminate the possibility of somebody, because it happens, taking left-hand turns in and out of there. So I don't know if you have any.
We can certainly sign that, but I think we can also look at actually channelizing the lanes that come in and come out of that, such that geometrically, it's not possible for a truck to turn left out of there.
I'm thinking even passenger vehicles. It's just the access to that from Route 20 needs to be right in, right out. And what can be done to really make it known to motorists that, oh, I know it says no left-hand turn, or however of signage you want to put up there, I get it. But to physically see that, no, I got a real But to physically see that, no, I got to really do something to get in there.
I think by channelizing it, that's probably the best idea, given that there's trucks going in and out of there. Instead of doing a typical raised island, what we'll do is we'll make the pavement lanes that are turning hard to the right to make them go there. And then the divider in the middle, what we'll probably do is like a one- or two-inch-high concrete area with a rumble strip on the top of it. Just so you not only do you see the driveway there, there's a visual and a physical barrier there and.
So do you think that that'll be available for us to view at our next meeting?
Oh, absolutely. Yep. We'll get that back. We can probably get that sketched out and back into Mr. Cahill early next week.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else on the board have any general questions relative to the site itself right now? Mr. Jerry?
No, you covered the comment I had. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Thomas?
I also agree with your comment, but I go back to the if you could go back to the first slide with the signs, I couldn't read the top one.
Passenger vehicles only. All deliveries to use Hartford all deliveries to use Hartford Turnpike entrance.
And that's going to be facing South Street?
That's yep, that's north of the driveway on South Street. So as they're as they're coming down South Street, they see that.
Okay. What about the traffic coming up South Street? What are you going to see?
We could put that exact same sign. We'll reverse the arrow, of course. We could put that same sign on the other side of South Street if you'd like.
Could you do it on both ends of South Street?
Sure. Yeah, both just before the you know, maybe 50 to 100 feet before the driveway.
Right.
On both sides.
Okay.
Yep. We could do that.
Thank you. Good catch. Anything else relative to the site?
No, sir. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, I had discussed with Mr. Maury earlier today about the possibility, and this is very preliminary because it only just occurred to me today, to perhaps designate some of the parking as what are we calling it? Not backup, reserve parking? Just because without a tenant, as we know, they don't have a tenant at the moment. However, I thought if we if they could mark some of these as reserve and then base the parking that gets built on the tenant that comes in, we could have. So say a tenant comes in, they don't need all the proposed parking. We could have extra green space, but it would still be there approved by this board and allowed to be built if in the future that were to become necessary. But for now, we could potentially say on impervious, were that to be implemented. So we could do it as a reserve. We've done it before. They're well over what's required. So the board has a lot of leeway to allow what they want to allow, which you want to allow. So it's just something to think about, and I've asked them to think about it. It was just about three hours ago, so it's probably not fleshed out yet on their side, but I just want to mention that.
We did actually have a conversation, Mr. Orr and myself, had a conversation about that. Talked about the pros and cons of it. We think it's actually a very positive idea and it's something we'd like to incorporate if, you know, if the board allows it. The thought process behind the parking that you see here, as Mr. Cahill mentioned, there's no tenant yet. If we had a straight logistics/distribution use, we probably would not need this much parking. We would certainly need that much loading area, but not that much parking. If it was more along the lines of a GMP or a research-type tenant, they would need the parking, maybe not as much loading. So in order to provide some flexibility in the marketing to the various brokers that are going to be, you know, looking at this and trying to help get a tenant in here, we've shown that much parking. But I think if we mark some as reserve, I think certainly these spaces up here would be very good candidates for reserve. I'd look at doing some of these spaces over here, especially in this outbound piece as reserve. This entire leg down here could be reserved. And then we'd start taking a look at knocking some of these back as well. And just the thought off the top of my head is what we would do is we would take for the final site plan that comes in, we would just put an R in each of those spaces that ends up, we think are reserved, will leave what's required by zoning as not reserved. And we'll go from there. So if that's something that you would like to see, we certainly have no problem doing that.
While we're on kind of the subject of tenant and not having one totally defined at this point, one of the things I would like to make sure that we have in the decision is going to be hours of operation. And I don't know that I've come across anything with any indication as to what your plan was for hours of operation. It would be nice to kind of settle that in so that it can be in the decision. It's a it's a big concern for obviously the neighbors. I know it's a concern for mine. And I know that not having the tenant is difficult to come up with that, but I think we need to at least have something that we can put in the decision and then, you know, potentially revise it based on tenant after the fact. But we need to do something because having it just wide open is, on hours of operation, at least for me, is a little bit of a problem. Okay? All right. So we can go on to traffic, please.
So the last time that we were before you, we presented our initial traffic impact and access study results, which the findings of that initial presentation are up here on the board for you, which essentially showed that from the initial study that we did, that there were no real major safety concerns in terms of access to the site for sightlines or high crash rates at any of the study area intersections. And it also showed that there was a limited increase in delay that would result from the additional traffic that would be generated by the project through any of the study area intersections. Based on the findings of the study, we were recommending a post-monitor or post-occupancy monitoring study be conducted that would confirm the results of those and then assess whether the mitigation measures that were identified as part of the original MEPA permitting needed to be implemented. Since that time, the peer review has been conducted. And there were several comments that came up in the peer review initially, looking to verify some of the inputs that we used for our traffic study, some of the traffic volumes that were used, as well as to look a little bit more closely at some of the collision patterns at some of the study area intersections, because although none of them were considered a high-crash location, some of them were at or just above the district-wide average for similar for similar types of intersections. So we took a look at those and did some additional analysis. We took another look at some of the traffic volume inputs that we had and put together a response to comments, which has since been reviewed again by the peer review consultant. And based on the peer review consultant's second round of review, they have verified that the analysis time periods that we used within our traffic study were appropriate, which included the weekday morning and weekday afternoon or evening peak hours. They have verified that the seasonal adjustment that we applied to the traffic volumes was appropriate and that the growth rate that we used to grow traffic volumes out to a future year condition was appropriate, as well as verifying that the other development, the other development projects that we included and that the traffic volumes generated by those other developments was also calculated appropriately. They also verified the results of our trip generation estimate for the volume of traffic that we anticipated to be generated by our own project and how that traffic would be distributed to the adjacent roadway network. Since we initially completed the study, as you know, the Route 20 driveway has been restricted to right in, right out. So we did make some adjustments to the trip distribution based on that right in, right out. That revised trip distribution was reviewed by the peer review consultant, and they did verify that that distribution was appropriate. We also took a look at the collisions patterns at some of the study area intersections and had identified at the Route 9 westbound and Route 9 westbound connector to Route 140 some potential safety measures that could be implemented at that location. When we met with Mass DOT back in June, we discussed those measures with them. They were generally in favor of those measures, which include putting in some new signage for the Route 140 connector. The signage that's out there today isn't placed very well and the indications on the signs are a little bit confusing, so it's tough for drivers to really figure out where they're supposed to turn. And one of the signs is actually located just after the intersection, which we think is likely contributing to some of the rear-end collisions that are happening there. Rear-end collisions are very uncommon at unsignalized intersections, so that was one of the items that we we felt would be appropriate. Those will be continue to be reviewed by Mass DOT as part of the MEPA process and Mass DOT permitting process, but generally, they seem to be in favor of those measures at that location. We were also asked to provide site distance measurements for trucks in addition to the passenger vehicles that we had previously done as part of the traffic study. Those measurements were also peer-reviewed by the peer review consultant and agreed that site distances for trucks will also exceed ASHTO requirements. And then we performed an updated capacity analysis, which the peer review consultant reviewed that and again verified the inputs of that analysis, verified the methodology, and concurred generally with the conclusions of that analysis. Based on all of this additional analysis being prepared and provided, the results are very, very similar to what we had shown to you last time. So this is similar diagram to what we showed last time that showed what the increases in delay through each of the study area intersections would be. And again, you can see that the maximum increase in delays is just over 12 seconds through any of the study area intersections. And for the majority of them, they're all less than 10 seconds of delay that would be increased through any of the study area intersections. There are some mitigation measures that are actually proposed. One of those is actually at the Route 20 Centec Boulevard and Cherry Street intersection. So at that intersection, there are some mitigation measures that are actually proposed by others as part of the Village at Grafton Woods project. They are proposing now to do some signal timing improvements that will significantly reduce the delay through that intersection by about 50 seconds per vehicle, so pretty substantial delay decrease. So we did model that in our analysis and showed what that impact would be, and it does show substantial improvements at that location. You may also recall that as part of the MEPA permitting phase or process for the previously proposed development, there was a right turn lane that was proposed on South Street southbound that would be constructed if the level of service on that approach was found to exceed the criteria for a level of service E. So essentially, if the delay was more than 55 seconds on that approach, then construction of that additional turn lane would be provided. The other criteria was if the queues on that approach extended beyond Chestnut Street. Based on the analysis that we performed under the no-build condition, those thresholds are both exceeded. So and that essentially happens because of a number of other development projects in the area that have been proposed since the time when the original project was permitted through the MEPA process, including the Village at Grafton Woods, Edgemere Crossing, The Point. So there are a number of other developments that add about 20% or increase the traffic volumes along Route 20 by about 20% through the intersection that are resulting in that. All of those traffic studies are all based on very similar conservative assumptions, worst-case scenarios. So some of that traffic may never actually be realized. So what we would recommend, again, is to follow the same procedure that was done with the previous permitting, is to do a post-occupancy monitoring study within six months of opening and verify what are the actual conditions out there and construct that lane if it does actually exceed those thresholds. Under existing conditions right now, that approach is only at a level of service D. So it's not anticipated that if we just added our traffic on top of existing, that it would exceed those thresholds. It's really a combination of all this other growth in the area that's meeting now. But with implementation of that additional lane, the delay through that intersection could be substantially decreased by about 27 seconds per vehicle through that intersection. So if that is found to be needed, we would implement that measure. So essentially, the recommendations that we had as a result of the traffic study and the updated analysis were to restrict the Route 20 driveway to right in, right out, as was already discussed tonight. Construct that additional lane on South Street southbound if that is determined by the monitoring study to be needed. The other thing that the monitoring study would look at is the Route 9 and South Street intersection, where again, under that no-build condition, there were some poor levels of service headed eastbound on Route 9 and coming northbound on South Street. So eastbound on Route 9 in the morning, northbound on South Street in the afternoon. And it happens in the no-build and the build condition. So we'd look to monitor that intersection as part of the monitoring study and re-optimize the signal timing based on the results of that monitoring study so that it really reflects what the traffic volumes are at the time. And then we would also implement the safety enhancement measures that I mentioned previously at the Route 9 and Route 9 westbound intersection. And as we already discussed, the post-occupancy monitoring study would be a part of that as well. And that essentially summarizes the additional analysis that we've prepared and what the conclusions have been to date. So there are specific questions? I can go over any of the details of those?
I want to get our peer reviews' response, but before we do, just if anybody on the board have any particular questions based on this current presentation.
Yeah, Mr. Jerry, thank you. I know you may have submitted the notice of project change for this project recently. I know Mass DOT reviews the traffic aspects of it and they provide input, but in addition to that, is there any permitting process that you need to go through with Mass DOT so they sign off on the project at some stage? And what would that be like?
Sure. Yeah. So as part of the MEPA permitting process, obviously, Mass DOT will review the project then. And that's when they will typically do their heaviest portion of the review and they'll identify what mitigation measures may need to be implemented. Then we'll have to go through Mass DOT permitting for the access out onto Route 20 as well. And with that, they will review the actual design of any improvements that come out of the MEPA permitting process.
So it's quite possible as part of Mass DOT's review that some of the comments that our chairman raised regarding right in, right out, how do you kind of really make sure that happens, may be addressed by Mass DOT as part of their review too?
It may, yeah. And exactly what Todd described as far as the channelization and implementing the kind of rumble strip type effect of the, you know, the raised concrete that's only a couple inches high and mountable by trucks, emergency vehicles. That's the exact type of thing that Mass DOT would typically look for for channelizing movements.
Thank you.
Mr. Jerry?
Yeah.
Mr. Thomas?
So the additional lane on South Street, what how exactly would that go again? How would we decide? How would you decide if that was going to happen or not?
Sure. So within six months of the initial opening of the development, we would do a post-occupancy monitoring study that would include collection of new traffic counts at that location so that we're basing them on what's actually out there. We would readjust as necessary for seasonal adjustments and if needed, COVID adjustments. Hopefully, we don't need to by then. And then we would redo the analysis. We would account at that time for any developments that have been opened, those five that I mentioned previously that have been approved already or going through the permitting process. So we would any of those that haven't been constructed yet, we would account for those adding on their traffic and then look to see whether that level of service E or the queuing threshold is met. And with that, we would typically do observations of actual delays and queues in the field too, so that we can calibrate the model and make sure that it's accurate to what's out there.
Brittany, would we be able to bring in a peer reviewer also to determine if it was needed for that? Is that something that normally would happen?
I believe so that trigger would be through Mass DOT, correct? Because they control the intersection? That's my understanding.
It would be submitted to Mass DOT. It was something. It was something that was required as part of the previous MIPA permitting process.
Right.
So we would have to do that no matter what as part of that.
Okay.
So I'm actually working currently, I know Mr. Finley hasn't had a chance to speak yet, but with our own peer reviewer to come up with conditions similar to what we had over at Edgemere for post occupancy studying and what this board's going to require. So we are working out those details now.
Okay.
And we'll have them in hand by the next meeting.
Okay.
So I kind of have a takeoff question. It's almost like he was looking at my notes as I was writing it. So on the South Street, what would be the harm of just building it? Why do you have to wait? Would it, is that something that Mass DOT needs to be involved with or?
They would need to review it, yes. They would need to review the design because it is under their jurisdiction, that intersection, and they would need to review signal timings and all of that as well.
I was just curious that, you know, why wouldn't we just do it if we know it was going to be an improvement right from the get-go, right?
Yeah, and I think, you know, our thinking behind it is that the intersection is operating well now, and, you know, with all of this other development that's coming, we don't really know what's going to happen and whether any of that traffic is going to be realized in the long term. That was a condition of the previous approvals, so we were kind of keeping along with that condition, particularly because this development is anticipated to generate significantly less. You know, we had presented in the findings last time that it's about a 70% reduction from what was previously permitted on the site.
Thank you. Mr. Finley, would you like to give us?
Timmer.
I'm sorry?
Timmer.
Sure, I'm sorry, Mr. Eliade.
I'm just curious, preliminary indication from Mass DOT, how do they perceive this project? Have they turned their nose up on this or how are they looking at it?
I mean, they don't generally, when we meet with them, give an opinion on if they're in favor or against a project. They talk more about, you know, whether the study area intersection, the analysis, and all the things that we're looking at are appropriate and the mitigation appears appropriate.
Do you have a feel about the whole thing as to how they're looking at it favorably or not?
Yeah, I mean, they seem to be in favor of the measures that we talked about with them at the meeting that we had with them in terms of the safety measures and, you know, the reduction in traffic that we're having and continuing with the same off-site roadway improvements based on that.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't see your reading.
Yeah, their biggest concern was access out onto Route 20 and restricting the left turns there. And part of that is for compliance with their Route 20 master plan that they have as well.
Thank you. Mr. Finley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Stephen Finley. I'm the senior project manager of McMahon Associates. We were hired by the town to do a peer review of this project, including the site plan as well as the traffic study. I won't be repetitive because I know a lot of the things that we've done have been talked about tonight, but I just want to kind of give an update of where we're at. I think at the last hearing that we had, we identified 25 issues associated with the site plan as well as the traffic study. As the applicant has mentioned, we've gone back and forth. We did receive their responses to our original comments back in July 22nd, so we've gone through a thorough review of that information, did provide our responses back to those comments. So out of the 25 issues, 19 of those have been addressed. So there's six outstanding issues that I think have been talked about tonight. Those issues just correspond, the first one had to do with the building size, the consistency between the plans and the traffic study. The second one, the other one, had to do with traffic monitoring. We suggested the six-month post-operation study. And that's also something that could be a third party, just for the board to understand that you mentioned the peer review.
Right.
So that's something that could be done and could be mentioned in the conditions. I have been talking to Mr. Cahill as well, so that language could be in there if required. Doesn't necessarily have to be the applicant that does the study, it could be somebody else, but we can work on that as well. The other outstanding issues had to do with the signage, restricting the trucks, I think was talked about. They haven't seen the plan that they showed tonight, but we'll take a look at that before the next hearing and make sure that that looks okay. I couldn't read it from where I was sitting that year anyway. And then the last issue had to do with the truck turns, the WB60, the large vehicles within the site. So those were the six issues that we had outstanding that we provided, so we haven't received the information back. I think it's been talked about tonight, but my understanding is that will be relayed back to us, and our hope is that before the next public hearing, we'll have all these issues and I can put up and say that all 25 issues that we've identified have been addressed.
Very good, thank you. All right, before we open up to the public, is there any other questions from the board? Mr. Eliade.
I'm good.
Jerry?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thomas?
No, sir.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to be heard, please raise your hand. Yes, Mr. Singer.
Yeah, David Singer from 400 South Street. A couple of issues to bring up new tonight.
As well as addressing some of the things addressed by the board, I also asked Mr. Cahill if he could get up a couple of pictures for me relating to traffic. While he does that, I have a couple of the other issues. At the last conservation meeting, it was pointed out by Mr. Moray that on the site was bedrock that was discovered and that now, all of a sudden blasting is going to be needed to take care of some of that bedrock. So this really is kind of a large and a new development that I'm a little surprised it wasn't brought up here. They say it's a shallow layer, but as the extra costs and delays and blasting that occurred during the building of high school shows, surveys aren't always right.
All right, can I interrupt you for one moment, please? So first of all, we know that we don't deal with conservation issues here. And I believe I saw our communication from the planning department that blasting and things of that nature is not part of this board, that is through the fire department. So we don't typically have those types of conversations. I understand your concern, but I would bring them forward to the fire department, please.
Okay. Also then, my second point comes to a little bit of conservation, a little bit of what you brought up here tonight as well, as far as really having no tenants. You can go through the minutes of the conservation meeting, there was general and overall concern about the size of the buildings and in the location of where they're going, closest to the large amounts of wetlands. So there was also drainage system approval in a prior meeting on the docket. There was concern about drainage on a two-person occupancy building, whether it was a condo or for commercial development, but the board was hesitant to approve the drainage system any site approval until there was a tenant known. And so I brought that up during our meeting, that if that applies to a two-person building, what happens with the building, how many times larger? I have no idea. And so I would hope that their concerns would also parlay onto the concerns of this board, in fact, that we still have no tenants. If it's approved, we definitely face years, maybe forever, of empty buildings, especially with a sister project by North Bridge just over the border. We talked about this at the last meeting. There are less traffic concerns, of course, but the access problems still exist, and the buildings with no tenants is a major problem I can really think about is, you know, the last scene of The Planet of Apes where Charlton Heston realizes the land they destroyed was actually theirs and they were kind of responsible, mankind, for doing it. My third point actually comes to the traffic. I don't know if, can you flip that around, Bernie, so we get the other picture first or? Just the next one. Come back to this one second, just that I have it laid out in my notes here. So I did my own traffic study, as I always typically do. This was taken from the top of my driveway, and this looks north heading to South Street. This is about mid-June, and this is also about a week or so after the town trucks, the big rigs came and kind of cleared as best as they could onto the right side. But I'm not a technician, I don't know all the site survey studies. All I know is that this sight line, it disappears really until you get up until the corner here. In addition, and this, and again, this was cut back yesterday. It seems like sometimes right before and right after meetings, the trucks come out. So you can imagine between mid-June and yesterday, what kind of growth was there. And this grows really more like an Amazon with all the water and wetlands and everything that exists up there. While right turns only will decrease the safety factor on Route 20, at the point of entry, traffic and standstill traffic will become increased as well. It will also increase some of the intersections we talked about. And I mentioned at the last meeting, the survey of the accidents that happen in the intersections are minimal. Most of the accidents really happen in between these intersections, at Walnut Street, at Dunkin' Donuts, at, you know, the baseball place, everywhere in between these places. It's really the light cycles that become the safest places out there. As for South Street, in addition to the problems that we have coming north, traffic coming south, it's a really deceptive slope, and it really, really bites to the left, starting right about before the sign, a little bit after the barn. 90%, I would say, I didn't do a site survey officially, but I would say 90% of traffic heading south crosses this double yellow line. So I encourage the next peer review site survey people to come out, stand outside and count the cars crossing the double yellow lines, trucks, box trucks, 18-wheelers. It's a scary thing. You'll notice I have a couple of boulders on the top of my property where the guardrail ends. We did this years ago after we got tired of cars landing in our property. The boulders have helped, but the displaced boulders, broken glass, occasional hubcap, and always having to replace the driveway and border markers every year is clear evidence they're constantly getting hit. These boulders are going to be no match for the increased truck traffic that's going to be proposed coming down this roadway, unfamiliar with the road and how dangerous it gets to that point. Lastly, to this picture, with all the car dealerships that sit on Route 9, every car carrier, every one of them, heading north, and there's a lot because there's a lot of car dealerships, cross the double yellow line to avoid all of this growth, to avoid their cars getting scratched. And so all day long, not all day long, but any time a car carrier comes by, this guy's over, you've got a car streaming this way. It's a really dangerous situation. It's something, none of your site surveys, none of your things at rush hour in the morning and the afternoon are going to detect. This is an extremely dangerous stretch of roadway that my house, two other houses and families all reside over here. Every time a truck comes down there, it's like a torpedo on wheels coming at my house. It's a dangerous situation. The next picture, if we could, thanks. Also, from the top of my driveway heads south, I've also mentioned the, and we talked a little bit tonight about the Chestnut Street intersection. Again, sightline, surveys, distance, you can clearly see from the drop top of my driveway how quickly South Street drops off to zero sightline. If there's a car that's backed up to basically where the traffic light is with an unattended car not paying attention, you're really causing a disaster here. Police and ambulance come flying down the road all the time, probably going to another accident on Route 20, and I'm always concerned that backed-up traffic is going to create their own traffic. In normal times, when UMass is running, traffic then also from the release during the day backs up to Chestnut Street. So you have a delay of traffic coming down Chestnut Street to go to South Street. You have cars jutting out on this side of the triangle to get a viewpoint of cars coming up north, and cars going to the center to avoid these cars and creating another, you know, dangerous situation that all these site surveys don't pertain to, with all the questions that continue with the property from traffic, unknown tenant use, hours of operation, and on and on and on. The new blasting revelations, the conservation committee reservations, it seems ever more, after every meeting, Mother Nature screams ever louder to drop the must-build mandate and to be left alone for the people of Shrewsbury all over, for the people of Shrewsbury and the health of town. While not as cataclysmic, let's turn this property, let's not turn this property and those two huge out-of-place buildings into our own man-made Planet of the Apes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Hello. Hello. I'm Mark Carlson. I live at 29 Thomas Farm Circle, so right behind Building A. Couple of things that occurred to me tonight. One was the hours of operation, thank you. I'm a little worried about hearing trucks backing up all day and all night, because that's what we're going to be listening to. The other thing was the traffic study. A month ago, when we got together, the concern was making the left-hand turn. And what I'm hearing tonight is we're going to force people to make, truck drivers to make the right-hand turn on Route 20. And I'm like, how are they going to get to 495? They're going to jump onto Cherry and cut over to Route 9 and get no 495 that way. Cherry going that way is a very narrow street. It is not South Street. It is windy, it is hilly, and the end of that street is all houses with signs up that say "Go Slow," children playing. It's not a street for big rigs. If they're not going to take that street, which is what I would do if I was a truck driver, they're going to go up to 140, take that exit, and then try to do a turn around and come down Route 20. That's going to be, that's better, but they're going to take Cherry. So that's my, those are two things that occurred to me as I was sitting here.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Hi, Michael Picaro, 27 Thomas Farm Circle. I do appreciate the concern about the hours of operation. I think in a prior correspondence communication to Mr. Cahill, I outlined that as well. And I just disappointed that Building A, where it does a but, a longstanding neighborhood, doesn't really provide a lot of mitigation for the sound and noise, which was also mentioned in the prior correspondence. I think what we were at asking and what Mr. Morley's group initially proposed was a barrier wall and some level of vegetation. Granted, it will not mitigate all sound and sighting issues or lighting issues, but it will do some. And I think what we're asking is a fraction of the cost of what this project will, you know, the total will be. So I just ask for the board's stronger consideration and Mr. Morley to try and put some level of mitigation in there, at least addressing it to the concerns that were brought forward prior and now. Thank you.
Thank you. It was Building A, correct? Did you mention it was Building A that you had the biggest concern on?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wished to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
I'm 27 Thomas Farm Circle. So is it true that there's a weight restriction on Gold Street?
I can't answer that question. Maybe Mr. Truman can.
I'm not aware of one, Mr. Chairman. I can certainly look into it, but I don't believe.
I mean, this goes years back to like Adams Farm and the concern about the big trucks going down Cherry Street towards Route 9. Are there no weight restrictions in the town for 18-wheelers on streets that are that narrow?
No, there are no weight restrictions.
There are certain streets in town that have been dedicated, no truck zones, Old Mill Road is one of them, and there is a process that you can petition the town to convert the road to no traffic, but there's no weight restrictions per se. It's just we either, you know, eliminate truck traffic through certain roads.
Okay, I mean, especially just like you were saying, slow down. There are so many new houses down there with really small kids.
And I think the process for that would be applying to the Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen, okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Tarnica Shura, 29 Thomas Farm. It's all about the traffic. I know you keep saying that there's not going to be significant increase for, you know, hundreds of additional cars, 150 tractor-trailers. I just find that incredibly hard to believe. You just add five tractor-trailers in the morning and it's, you know, I can't imagine adding 75 in the morning, 75 in the evening on Route 20 and there not being an impact. I just, the math doesn't work. So anything that, like I said, I agree, we should just keep it nice and open. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wished to be heard? Yes, Mr. Singer.
Yeah, David Singer, just wanted to come again on the signs coming in and out of Village South Street or Route 20. I just don't trust them. I don't trust the truck drivers. I've mentioned before, I drive on the roads, you have the no-left lane trucks, you know, signs are out. These guys, they don't really pay attention to them at all. They just kind of do what they're going to do. I don't see those signs being helpful. I think that if you're going to restrict trucks coming in from Route 20 or from South Street, you have some type of height bridge maybe, so they certainly can't get over there. If trucks are coming down Route 20 and heading east and all of a sudden they can't see, they can't turn left into the site if they're unaware of this, then they're going to start turning into South Street, taking a left onto South Street and trying to figure out, you know, how to turn around up there. It's just a real big conundrum with the site as proposed and the area that exists there.
Okay, thank you.
they're going to start turning into South Street, taking a left onto South Street and trying to figure out, you know, how to turn around up there. It's just, it's just a real big conundrum with the site as proposed and the area that exists there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wished to be heard? This hearing will be continued. We are actually going to have a special hearing on the nineteenth of August after you've completed with or have your next meeting with Conservation to give a touch point as to where we are relative to that.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to give the applicant a chance to respond to any of the comments in particular, Ms. Brown? I was reading over the analysis again by you and Mr. Finland. My understanding was morning peak hours and evening peak hours, it was eighteen to nineteen tractor-trailer trucks estimated?
Yeah, so that was actually one of the comments that we got via email as well that we had responded to in our response to comments letter was that there was a concern that there was going to be a hundred truck trips in the peak hour, and it's a hundred total trips in the, the morning and evening peak hours. That includes passenger vehicles and trucks. The number of actual trucks out on the road is eighteen to nineteen that would be coming during any of those peak hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also just, may I also just speak generally to our audience? So to members of the public, well, we've been talking about traffic, and of course, there are going to be traffic increases on Route Twenty. As you all know and have heard tonight, Mass DOT controls Route Twenty through the Board of Selectmen and through this board, we can control some of the side streets and local streets. If you have comments for the state, we actually now put up online the MEPA project, what does it change, project? Notice of project change. I'll get it right one of these days. It's up there as well as links to how to comment to the state during that process. So if you want to check those out, you can check out on the website. And Mass DOT and MEPA accept your comments for that as well and take them into consideration. So those are the ones for, certainly for Route Twenty issues, who you want to be speaking to and directing your comments to, so maybe we take advantage of it.
And just to add to that, if you do submit comments, don't submit them until after August, I believe it's August eleventh that it's published in the Environmental Monitor.
Yes, correct.
They won't take the comments until it's formally published, so. And then there's a, there's a window.
Thank you.
Is there any other?
I just, I just want, what was the total number of cars and trucks? I'm sorry. Because in the meeting on May sixth that you had, there was the talk of hundred-and-fifty trucks per day, and they were saying it was seventy-five in the morning and seventy-five at night. So I'm just curious now what the new numbers are.
I think the seventy-five that is being talked about is seventy-five entering, seventy-five exiting trucks. The hundred-and-fifty trucks across the day, that, that was what we gave at the last meeting, that has been updated. I think the new number might be one fifty-two. It's right around the same. But the actual number of trucks during the weekday morning and peak hours is eighteen in the morning, nineteen in the afternoon. Actually, sorry, reverse that, nineteen in the morning, eighteen in the afternoon.
Okay. Thank you.
How can they even say how many trucks are going to come in and out when they don't know who the bucket list is going to be?
Would you like to expand on that?
Sure.
Question, she's going to answer.
Yep. So the data that we use to estimate that is from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's collected for a variety of office warehousing-type uses across the entire country, including multiple tenants. And so, on average, it's about thirty percent of the warehouse trips that are coming from trucks. And so, when we calculated out the trips for the warehouse, we assumed that thirty percent of those would be trucks without knowing who the tenant would be at the time.
Thank you for the clarification.
I just want to add also something about the, there was a comment about the signs won't work and they won't know to turn right and turn, and how to get in and get out. And this is something I actually just learned within this past week at a meeting on a different project in a very different part of the state. A lot of these, these types of facilities and these types of operations, the routes that the truck drivers take, they'll be an hour away from here. And not only will they know exactly how they have to approach this, this site, they'll know what the existing traffic conditions are, they'll even know exactly which dock door they have to go, probably an hour out from here. So everything that they do now is, is fully automated. So I, whether they're using a, you know, a computer terminal in their truck, or even if it's just the GPS on their cell phones, they know a long, long ways out where they've got to go. So the optimal route to get in and to get out is, is known by them long, far ahead. So if, you know, one of the comments was, well, how do they get out of there and they go to four ninety-five? They'll know that ahead of time. They won't be hunting and picking. They won't come down Route Twenty expecting to turn left into this facility. They'll know well ahead of time that they have got to be going up Route Twenty and turn right into this facility. Like I said, they already even know which dock door they're going to. So they know exactly what they're going to be doing. That's just, that, I, that's apparently just how, how modern-day logistics works. And so, I, I was fascinated. They, they actually showed me one of the, one of the types of programs they use on a cellphone for some of these drivers the other day, and it, it was actually very interesting. I wish my GPS was as good as that one.
Mr. Singer. Keep it brief, though, please.
David Singer, point of South Street, counteractive to Mr. Moray's technological. I, I have warehouse space at the Worcester Business Center. I have a family business. We distribute to TJ Maxx, the largest retailer in the world. Their logistic systems are the best logistic systems in the world. I can tell you for simple fact, the way logistics works these days, it's not done necessarily just on route drivers, it's done on who's the cheapest for the day. Every time I get a driver come to pick up, a pickup from my building, he can't figure out how to get from the front to the back. He can't figure out which loading, I've got two loading docks. One has stuff all over it. It's clear that that's not the loading dock that they're supposed to use. I get a cellphone call, hey, I'm in your building, I'm a...
I didn't want to get into your personal business. I, I get your point.
The idea is, what Mr. Moray says is not the reality that happens out there. It's, it's supposed to work, but it doesn't. Thank you.
Point taken. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Again, we are going to continue this hearing, so I'll entertain a motion to continue both hearings.
Yep, I would move that we continue the public hearing for the Warehouse Distribution and Logistics Campus Master Plan Development for the special permit and also the site plan approval located at three eighty-four, three eighty-six South Street and seven twenty-one Hartford Turnpike to the special meeting of the Planning Board scheduled for August nineteenth at seven P.M.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is all we have for public hearings for this evening. We do have some cleanup work to do, so we have a new business. So just a reminder, the public hearing is closed for the next discussion that we're going to have, which is to discuss and deliberate the Wyman Farms nine thirty-five Main Street Site Plan Modification. Everyone should have received in their packet, based on our last meeting, the decision with modifications that addressed some of the concerns that were brought up during that meeting, point mostly to Item Six and Seven, which is that all improvements, as shown on the site plan modification, shall be witnessed by a third-party geotechnical engineer, chosen by the Planning Board and funded by the applicant. The geotechnical engineer shall review the proposed site plan as well as conduct onsite construction observations and reporting. Documentation by third-party geotechnical engineer of the work performed shall be provided to the Planning Department and DPW. Item Seven is the applicant shall notify DPW at least seventy-two hours prior to the start of work on the changes as shown on the above-mentioned plans. Other than that, is there any other questions, comments, or concerns that were brought up inside the overall decision? Mr. Roth?
No comment. I just had a couple of typos that I gave it to Mr. Cahill that have been corrected already.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Jerry?
No comments or concerns?
No comments or concerns.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to explain to the board, and we didn't receive it in time for the paper packets, but it is on the Google Drive, the proposal from GZA, are the same peer reviewer we used last summer, this board used last summer to review the slope further to the east-west, whatever it is, to the left of this project. They did submit a scope. It was reviewed by Mr. Truman and myself, and it was, we approved it. And we did run it by the applicant just to make sure that they were on board, weren't going to have an argument with them about it, and they are on board with it as well. So we will move ahead with that scope of work once you make this decision and request the funds from the applicant and allow them to get going on this project.
Very good. Thank you. All right. I don't believe there was any waivers in this decision, so I will entertain a motion.
I would move that we execute the decision of the Planning Board regarding the application for a site plan modification at nine thirty-five, formerly known as nine forty-five Main Street, Wyman Farms LLC, permit number SPA eleven-two-zero-two-one.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Our next item of business to discuss and vote on bond release for two thirty Cherry Street. Mr. Cahill?
Yep. This would be, this site plan modification was approved in the spring of this year. By this board, the ASBilt was submitted to myself and DPW. We have reviewed the site against the ASBilt. Everything seemed to be in order. They did come in here for a diminutist change in between, so we received two ASBilts. We now have the most accurate ASBilt, and it does check out. And they were asking for the release of the entirety of the bond, which was approximately, I can't remember exactly, it was like two hundred and something dollars. So if we just have a vote to release the entirety of the bond for two hundred and thirty Cherry Street, that will do it.
Perfect. Any questions or comments from the board relative to the bond?
No comments.
No comments. Entertain a motion?
I move that we release the bond in its entirety for two thirty Cherry Street.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. And our final item of business is to discuss and vote on zoning article requests for special town meeting for 2021. Mr. Cahill?
Yes, thank you. So special town meeting is coming up, I believe it's October twelfth. And this is, as we tend to do, bring these zoning articles before you to request that you vote to ask me to send these articles to the Selectmen and have them placed on the warrant article. So I am just realizing I didn't have it open, but let me get it open real quick. This letter then is what will be, I gave it to you in your handouts, I believe, or your supplementary? No?
I did not.
I'm sure you'll find it. It was there. It's okay. You guys have a lot of paper.
Yes.
Or do I have it here still? Maybe I have it here. I'm sorry if I didn't hand it out. Never mind. We didn't hand it out. That's okay. And you know what? You guys need to sign that, too. So here, if you want to take these, there's one for Jay. So that is the letter right there, to the Selectmen, a draft of it. So let me just run real quick through here, and I'll let you guys go.
Go sign it.
So the first zoning article that we would be asking the board to request of the Selectmen would be to incorporate the Town Center District into the inclusionary section of the, inclusionary housing section, excuse me if you will, of the zoning bylaw. We wanted to figure out what, before we put it in the inclusionary, we wanted to make sure, we, we did some analysis of what makes sense, what percentage of inclusionary we'd be asking. So like when we do senior housing, right, there's a percentage, it's like fifteen percent, apartments are like twenty, twenty-five. So we just wanted to make sure, as this is a new zoning district, that we were putting in something that we thought made sense and proposing that number. So that's what that is. It's pretty straightforward. It's a couple of words, we're putting into the subsection seven K. So just to make sure all the districts are covered by the inclusionary. And that is, as you know, you know, fee and lieu, if they don't build it, hopefully they build it, the units, if it's apartments and what have you. So the next one, let's see, this is, if you actually read down below, it does tell you. Right. So the next one is, I think everyone noticed, during COVID, outdoor dining has kind of exploded. And people's, the popularity of it has really shot up, and people want it to stick around. So what we've undertaken is kind of a review of all our outdoor dining regulations to see if we could somehow lower barriers or make it simpler or what have you, and even add it to a couple of places. So limited business district, Jay's shop is in limited business district. That side of the road, on Route Nine, does not, for example, allow outdoor dining right now. So we'd like to put it in there and take a look at seeing if we can clarify it in the name of trying to simplify it, right? So if we can have some very simple criteria in the zoning, so people just understand, how do I, if I come to town and I want to do this, what, what are the criteria I need to meet to get this done? And, and we're contemplating a few other things. We're getting close. We don't have the language right now, but that's the other one. A couple more. This next one is simply, well, I say simply, it's, it's not going to look simple, but it really is. We're updating the telecommunications facilities in town, so there's like antennas for, you know, cellphone towers and stuff. We found over the last few years that our regulations have fallen behind FCC guidelines, federal guidelines, and we're kind of out of step with them right now. So we're looking to do that as well as fifth-generation technology, make sure we're prepared for that. But really, the biggest point of this is to make sure that our antenna bylaws and everything's up to date and not continue to fall behind. And of course, we know these things keep moving, so we'll probably be back in five years updating it again, but for right now, we really need to get it up. We're probably more like ten years behind at this point. So we want to get on board and make sure the FCC is not angry at us or anyone else. So anyhow, so that's kind of that one. And then the last one is, oh yeah, so this is right in front of the old, no, sorry, the Newfield School, not the Oldfield School, up on Lake Street. Everyone knows that street, Lake Street, was adjusted slightly, and it kind of threw off where the zoning district boundaries were right there by like, I don't know, Mr. McCollum needs to figure this out, our GIS coordinator, it's probably just a few feet, but it is now no longer in the correct spot, so we've asked him to please provide us with a new zone plan for right there on Lake Street where that, that street was readjusted. So those are kind of the four we're asking for and would like the board to have a vote to instruct me to send this letter to the Selectmen for special town meeting.
Does anybody have any questions or comments relative?
I have a question. On, on the outdoor dining article, Mr. Cahill, I was wondering, so this is post-COVID down the future, that, that this change is going to apply to?
Well, it would apply retro, if it gets through town meeting and Special Town Meeting approves it on the twelfth of October, it would apply retroactively to the twelfth. So it would be immediately. You raised a good point, though, Peron, that the state has actually extended. It's kind of, I don't want to call it an exception, but they kind of overruled some local zoning for outdoor dining and put into place during COVID. They extended that, I believe, through next April. So whether or not we do this, that's already covered through next April for restaurants in town, but this would extend it past that April deadline, if you will, or lifting of restrictions. Because the idea is that we want to keep this going, like people are really enjoying it. We just want to make sure it's easy for restaurants to understand what they need to do to get it done and, and also to help us to, you know, staff guide us on, when we're looking to monitor or regulate or whatever, review a new application. So it's a good question, yeah.
Good. Any other questions or comments relative to the zoning articles?
In, in your description of the one relative to the outdoor dining, you, I think I heard you say there were some other pieces that you were going to be including in that.
For outdoor dining?
Beyond the outdoor dining? Or is that strictly limited to outdoor dining that?
No, we're just looking, this is just looking at outdoor dining right now. So we're going to take a look at the, good questions. We're going to take a look at the definitions. We're going to take a look at the use table.
Yep.
And I say we're going to, we already have been. We're pretty far along. And then we're looking at Section Seven, potentially adding, like I said, a, like a subsection for criteria for outdoor dining for what we'd be looking for.
Okay.
When someone comes in, not so much submittal materials, but just maybe something about lighting or signage or what have you, something to provide guidance. We're close presenting, so at the September second meeting, you will have draft language by then.
Okay.
But we're just not quite game time-ready yet to present the language, but we want to get this on the warrant articles and a Selectmen or meeting next Tuesday to do that vote, so.
Questions? Anybody else have any other questions? Nope. I don't, I, I entertain a motion to forward this letter along to the Board of Selectmen.
I would move that we authorize the town planner, Mr. Cahill, to request the following article be, be placed on the town meeting warrant. I will note that in the first paragraph, you cite May 2021, but I assume that should read October?
My apologies.
No problem at all?
It's a draft though, so it's okay.
So I'm moving that, uh, we authorize Mr. Cahill to, uh, request these articles via the letter presented, um, to the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. With that, that is the final item. I wish to thank everyone for attending and for watching at home, and look forward to seeing you at our next scheduled meeting. Have a great evening.
Uh, this should be formal.
Oh, I need a, yeah, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Perna.